Well, how do I get, oh, I see you gave me the agenda over here, but I can't control it.
Go to, go to Lee County School. Go to the back, go to the back way.
All right.
There you go.
Are we ready?
Where did that go over it?
Yep.
Okay. My thing will, yeah, it will all be on the board doc, it's on the icon. So, okay, thank you.
Wait, and, but you might want, need it for looking at-
That's what I'm doing. They told me to go in the other way.
Go in the back way.
That's what I did.
Ah, okay.
So I'm in.
That's all I do.
Thanks.
Board members, are we ready? Yes. Good afternoon. Welcome to our workshop for January 27th, 2020. The time is 2:00 PM. And we will begin with our agenda review of the February 11th, 2020 regular agenda. So.
Sorry, that should have been the 28th, the January 28th agenda.
Oh, yes, I guess it should. Okay. I thought we were way ahead of ourselves. Okay. So we'll begin with, Dr. Atkins, do you want to start with the business services items?
Yes, the first question I do have comes from Business Services. And this is F1 approval to remove items from official property record. This is unable to locate property or instruments missing from the same school. And where they assigned to students. So I had in the audience where Mr. Clayton Simmons was going to answer that question. So I, hopefully he will be, we'll try to locate him and get him here. And if we could, let's, I'll have staff work on that and then we'll come back to that one. So if, with your permission, if we can jump down to G, Human Resources. I do see Dr. Pruitt and Dr. Martin in the audience. So this is a G1 approval to personnel recommendations. Dr. Pruitt. There was a question regarding one of the recommendations. And I think she is here to respond to it. The, Mr. Anderson, I think there was a question about if this is the same person. And the answer, the simple answer is it's a different person.
Yes, it's, no, it is not the same person. I think there was a question about supplements. So just let me say that supplements are part of the compensation package and are included in the budget process. The job descriptions that you are seeing are for supplements for next fiscal year, not this year. So when we, it will become part of that budget process. As we negotiate that, it is a bargained item.
Yeah, and that was a response to G2 approval, adopt job descriptions as part of Envision 2030 Job Descriptionary View Process.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we have a question for Ms. Patricca.
It's not a question, it's a statement. The volunteer coordinator position is so fantastic, I was so happy. I wasn't going to write a separate question on this, but I do want to comment on it because one of the issues that I hear in Astero quite frequently is I want to give my time to the schools and then they try to schedule time in the schools and there's nobody there who can handle the influx of talent that wants to be in our school. So I'm so in love with the fact that you're doing that.
We, we, yes, I agree, it was a great suggestion. We do have a supplement committee now that operates, that has management and TALC folks on it. And that's where that came from, is through that committee.
Great, thank you. Ms. Vaughn.
Yeah, I have some additional questions on, on G2. The avid contact person, minimum qualifications, Florida teaching certificate, current employee. Does that person not have to be teaching Avid? At the time that he or she becomes the contact person?
I, you know, I guess in theory it could be someone who, who doesn't teach Avid. I mean, I think that's probably done in an effort to not restrict the principal in making sure that they have. Because you could have someone who previously taught Avid that maybe not anymore. I mean, there's lots of scenarios that could come up, but I, I can't imagine that a, someone with no Avid knowledge would be given that supplement.
It's interesting because the other ones that are teachers, it says, you know, things, it's real specific. And this one's kind of vague. And that's what I was wondering about because it said to be effective, highly effect, I mean, some of those are no brainers that you're going to assign somebody-
Right.
-that, but I just wondered why this one was so vague. And it seems to me that it, that it would be a whole lot more effective if it was somebody on the current Avid team that would be-
I, I don't disagree with you. I'm looking to see if Will has come in the room because-
I'm wondering if we-
He, because we don't develop the job description. We're, you know, we work with whoever the, and I don't know if maybe Dr. Spiro knows who, that they worked with to get the job description for the Avid contact for next year. Okay, so, you know, we can certainly find that out, but I-
It just seems to me that compared to some of the others, that this is kind of vague. And I was wondering why it wouldn't be a necessity that it's somebody on the Avid team.
Right. Like I said, the only thing I can think is that we wouldn't want to restrict in case there was potentially somebody who previously taught Avid that, so.
Okay, Cambridge contact person. Is this changing something with that? Because I know for instance, when I was at Astero High School, Nancy Foley was and still is a Cambridge person that does a lot of this. Are we, are we changing that whole way that we do things with-
Not that I'm aware of.
So can somebody explain? Because I think she has, I think it's more than supplemental. I mean, she does it, she's in the office and, and I mean, it's like, I don't know if she does testing as, as well? Testing coordinator, I don't remember, but this was from my experience with Astero.
Well, you could still receive the supplement and be released from teaching classes and get the supplement. Right.
What I'm wondering is, this, these are new job descriptions, are they not?
New supplemental job descriptions, yes.
So can somebody explain how it changes the current?
I don't believe it does change anything current.
Well, but we have this position already.
We don't have a supplement where people are paid an additional amount of money for work that they do above and beyond what their daily work might be. The way the committee works is that the, the TALC folks and/or us conceivably come forward with a need where we have instructional staff that are doing things that are considered to be beyond the scope of their job description. And so they believe it's warranted to have an additional supplement to, for those duties that they deemed was, you know, extra. That's all, the only way I can say it.
Okay, and I, yeah, I just, as I said, I really didn't understand this because I know, you know, not only was she released, but there are a lot of additional duties. And so this serves, there, there's just one Cambridge contact person for school? Or had, I don't understand how that works.
So the, the request for the Cambridge contact person was based on at-large supplement usage. So we created at-large supplements so schools would have a certain number of supplemental positions that they could award based on whatever their individual needs are. Cambridge, I believe, Avid, ACE, IB, those were a couple that those schools had requested kind of en masse in the past couple of years. And so we created the job description based on what they said those people are currently doing with the plan that the supplement committee will start to put together a proposal for that supplement to be a paid supplement moving forward. One of the concerns that the, the committee discussed was that there are people that are doing a lot of duties that they're not receiving a paid supplement for. And so that impacts their ability to get the participation requirements for career ladder movement checked off because we, we currently award credit for that based only on paid supplemental positions. Because there's an earnings code, there's, you know, the exchange of money and paper records going back. So we've been able to use it as a reliable record.
But that's not really my question. My question is, how does this change, how is it different from what's been done right now in, in the schools? Because I know for, as I said, for instance, at Astero, Nancy Foley has been doing that job for years and she's still doing it, is, is there not another job description for that?
No.
That doesn't-
No, this is for supplemental work that is done to support Cambridge, to support Avid.
Okay.
It's not changing anything in terms of how Astero currently does it.
Okay.
Can I make a comment on that one really quickly? I was an Avid coordinator and the things I looked at on there are the things that I did. So are you basically saying that if I were still doing that job today, that I would get a supplement for doing it?
That is correct. And this has come out of, as, as Mr. Rothenberg explained, there were some generic supplements available to schools that were called at-large supplements. Principals made the decision to give those supplements to the people that were doing Cambridge, to the people that were doing Avid. So based on the need and the data showing that that's what those supplements had been used for, we formally developed to those supplements.
There used to be a supplement, maybe they still have it, that was just supplement non-departmental, which was really a very general, general, generic supplement that really had no job description. So as I understand it, this is an attempt to actually define duties a person would need to do in order to receive that compensation.
But it doesn't designate that they are released from teaching X number of classes?
No.
And yet that's how it's done?
Right.
Do you understand what I'm saying? It just, it's, it's very confusing to say this person, there's a difference between somebody that's teaching all their classes and getting a supplement. For instance, I used to get a supplement for a couple of years for being like a lead on AP and meeting. But it was, you know, a very small supplement to do. But the Cambridge, that, that's a huge program to deal with.
Right.
And that person is released from classes. That's, that's all, I'm, I know I'm saying too much to ask a simple question. It's up to the school to release them? I mean, this would be enough? To be teaching all their classes, wouldn't that be part of the description or?
It's not a, those are not primary job descriptions. They're supplemental job descriptions. So for example, if you got, if you get a supplement to be department head, there's a job description just like that for department head. And so again, the, through the supplement committee, the determination was made that there is enough work above and beyond a typical day, let's say, whether you're released or not, that you are doing those extra duties to the point that the principals have felt that having some additional compensation for duties that are above and beyond the normal workday. And that's where that need came out of, is the fact that the schools were giving those generic supplements to the people doing Cambridge, to the people doing Avid. And that's, these were developed out of that need that the schools had demonstrated. I can't speak to, at an individual school, if it's automatic, that they get released all day for Avid or Cambridge. I don't, I can't speak to that. That's, I don't know.
Now, that's, as I said, that's how they've done it for a long time.
Good afternoon. Not every school does it the way Astero High School does as well. So for example, North Fort Myers High School, their Cambridge coordinator teaches half of a day and then they do the coord-
That's what I'm talking about.
Right, and then they have to work the half of the day. I think the intent was, because as you were describing, the amount of work that is done with the Cambridge program exceeds what normally happens during the course of the workday. And I believe this was an attempt by the schools to be able to remedy through a supplement some of those issues.
And you also mentioned though, that it had to do, you had mentioned it had to do with paid supplements. Explain that part again. You said something about that in order to be considered for-
Oh, you're talking about the career ladder and participation. As the career ladder continues to evolve, one of the components of moving up the career ladder is participation in things that are above and beyond.
And it has to be a paid supplement to, could be considered for that?
Currently, the structure that is the bargained structure that is in place is that it's based on a, the parameters that Mr. Rothenberg outlined. The challenge and what we continue to work on is how to award participation for things that are non-compensatory. But right now, there is not a structure in place to make that happen, but it continues to be developed through the committee. I, I like to remind everyone the quote that says, "Continuous improvement is better than delayed perfection." We would have loved to have done participation for things that aren't paid for. But right now, the, the structure and how to capture that is not, is not available.
I, I would be remiss if I didn't say though, it does create a concern for me. Because if all of this is related to the administration saying who is going to get a supplement and who is not, therefore who is going to be able to move forward on the career ladder, I, I don't see the equity in that. I believe it's too subjective because if you select someone that you want to do this position, they get the supplement, therefore they get on the career ladder, it's, it's not fair to people that are doing things and not getting the supplement for it.
Which is why we're piloting how to capture participation in other areas. We, we, we recognize that. But again, it was either not do anything at all or continue to move forward in a way that will allow us to advance the career ladder. So we acknowledge what you're saying and it, it's, it's work in progress.
Two other quick questions. One, who is the supplement, supplement committee, how is that made up? How are they selected? And also, all of these items that are like future positions are supplements, except for one that's a director. And can you explain the director position, the cost involved there and that type of thing?
I'm sorry, what was the first part? I, I lost track.
The supplement committee.
Oh, it's TALC members and it's, he can tell you specifically, but TALC, you know, they put their members forward who they want on the committee and then we have quote unquote, "management" on the committee. Did you want to tell specifically who?
We, we have a principal from each of the levels and teachers from each of the level two. And then I think there's a district person from HR and a district person from payroll since anytime there's the changes to the supplement, you want to make sure that they're involved in that.
And are the teachers union teachers? They have to be union teachers to be on?
Yes, yeah, and, and TALC makes a recommendation and we do the same. And then we look at the cohesiveness of the, of the team. We, we had some changes in who was on that committee a couple of years ago and it's led to a lot of breakthroughs, the addition of the at-large supplement, the Special Olympics coach and some others.
And just for the record on that, I feel that supplements, it, it's kind of confusing to me that TALC and SPAC would not be concerned about the whole, as far as everybody getting an increase as opposed to something that gives a few a supplement. Was that discussed?
That is, that's discussed every, in terms of how you do it, total compensation, every bargaining session. You have to look at the amount that is available and the team has to weigh overall compensation and how much is going to be put toward a supplemental, a supplemental schedule because that's an additional schedule over and above the regular schedule. You know, remember this is a, it is a interest-based bargaining process. So we have joint committees that we select to work on these issues and make a recommendation for the bargaining team.
And it would be interesting, I'm not asking you to do it right now, but it would be interesting to see if the supplements in any way data-wise contribute to us maintaining teachers or keeping teachers in positions.
I, I know that more than 50% of teachers receive at least one or more supplement. And we have looked at some historic data and comparison data that, that shows that for a number of years, we did not put money towards supplements. And so when you compare what we pay for a department head compared to Collier or other neighboring districts, there has been a deficit. The, the first thing that was brought up was that a bowling coach at one point was paid as much as an ESE teacher supplement. So we've been working to correct a lot of those things as we go because they were neglected for, for a number of years.
Especially with the coaching situation because they spend so many more hours and it's-
As a former high school coach, I don't think we'll ever be able to pay them enough for that.
What you're owed, right, okay.
This team did move to indexing, which is something that was not done prior to that. And one of the things that indexing does, if you think about someone who's been a decades-long, successful football coach versus somebody who's brand new, used to be paid the same amount of money. That is not something that you find in some of these other districts. And so the team started working on an indexing of supplements. And so that does make a difference in terms of valuing experience with the district and the position.
Thank you. And the final question that I had asked was about the director position?
Yes, what is the question?
Well, the others are supplements and this is a director position. So can you tell us about, it's an additional position, correct?
It's a grant position through the, through the Title IV grant, yes.
Okay, so it's through the grant. Is it an existing? I mean, is somebody like doing that now and just not?
No.
Okay. Okay.
Board members, any other comments? Mrs. Jevonelli?
So my question is, do the supplements come out of the schools' individual budgets? Or is it coming out, comes out of, out of our operating budget? Where does the supplemental pay come from?
It is part of the bargaining package that we do each year. It's part of the total compensation package.
Okay, and then do we have an idea of what the actual amount is for all, you know, the total amount for all, for all of these positions, what that would be?
Not yet.
Each position will pay?
Yeah, no, that will be part of the bargaining process. These are, positions are for next year.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other comments, board members? Thank you very much.
Ms. Morgan, did you have any additional questions for Dr. Martin after receiving your information?
I didn't get information.
Oh. Wasn't it?
Yeah, the next question was G3.
Oh, sorry.
That's related to approval agreement.
I thought maybe I wasn't current.
No, I apologize, I thought you-
American College of Education for the Educational Leadership Program. Is this new? If so, communication collaboration role of the partnering district liaison.
Yes, it is a new partnership with American College of Education. And the district liaison will serve to coordinate regular phone calls with the committee at American College of Education as well as assist in the, the sharing of data on program outcomes, program completers at American College of Education, as well as allow us an opportunity to provide feedback on their program and alignment.
So who's doing it? And again, would this then be a supplemental?
That will be me. I will be the facilitator of the conversations between Human Resources and American College of Education.
Great, I, I, so I do want to say, and then you've got another one with St. Petersburg. So is that also new?
That is new.
And then the leads with FDCU. That's fantastic. So the only, so that's great. I guess the only question I then have is the lead partnership. It includes district responsibility for developing a pool of potential candidates. What will the process be for developing that pool?
So that will be any of our teacher leaders, anybody in any of those roles that are interested in becoming an administrator. We're also looking to, to revamp and start again a future leaders program. So just in case there's teachers who might not be in any of those positions but are still interested, that would be another group of potential candidates.
Great, wow, good work, guys.
Thank you.
That's exciting, well, looking forward to hearing.
Yes, we're excited about it.
Yeah, good.
Yeah.
There was, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Mrs. Jevonelli?
So I, I had another question regarding the Lexington middle appointment. Was that, is that a prior employee or was it the one that-
No, it's a different, different employee.
Brand new, thank you.
No, not brand new, but not the one that you're referring to.
Not, not either one, because it was a, there was two brothers that had similar names or something, so I'm getting-
No, this is it, yes, no.
Thank you.
Mrs. Gittens?
One of the supplemental positions was a contact person for the interns. And I'm not sure which one it was, was that the cooperating?
Is that the mentor?
No, there's a mentor and then there's one that's cooperating. I'm not sure which one that it was. So is, is-
That's just the cooperating teacher one?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the cooperating teacher that currently exists, was that just rewritten?
There, there wasn't a supplement paid for that.
Oh, okay.
There was what?
There was not a supplement paid for that in the past.
Okay, so now we're adding a supplement. But now when they come from the colleges as interns, aren't they still in constant contact with their instructors and all of that? So we're adding a layer at the school to help them?
Currently now, whenever you get an intern, you're in that role, working with that intern. So there's additional evaluations that you have to do on that teacher, the meetings that you have to have with the university supervisor. So there's those additional responsibilities that you have when you're working with the university and the intern.
Board members, further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you. Dr. Atkins, do we want to back up to section F?
Yes, Business Services approval to remove items from the official property records. Mr. Simmons is here to address that question. It's unable to locate property or the instruments missing from the same school. And the question is, were they assigned to students? So.
Good afternoon, everybody. I assume you're referring to the tuba and the oboe. I, that, I'm sorry, I'm embarrassed of the tuba. It's kind of embarrassing, but I'll take responsibility. I was the principal. However, I don't know if you remember back, we had an unfortunate situation where the band director was, last day of school, was arrested. And so he, and he's now in federal prison. So at that time, we did not know, unfortunately. He was the fourth band director in four years. We did not have, know whether the equipment was sent out for repair, or if it was given to the students. We went through all of the records, including looking through every space, and was unable to find either one of them. We also contacted Cadence Music everywhere, everywhere that we can think of. There are pieces of a tuba that are in there. Unfortunately, it doesn't have a barcode. So that possibly could be it, but the barcode is missing from that. And the instruments are about 30 years old. But the positive thing is, there's now a process in place of double-checking all of this. So when we have a new, new person that comes onboard, that it's monitored by administration so that they can see where it checked out, where they're going, whether they're being repaired, or whether they were checked out to students.
The second, second part of the question, board members, just to know, if you, if you look in the item itself, there is a location number located to the far left of the item, and it typically tells you, gives you a number which identifies the location. And as I look at these particular items, it would be 0731 for the majority of those. Those would be a sterile high school, I would assume, but there is the French horn, which is 0721. So unless that's a, that appears to be a different location. But that's how you can tell whether or not they're at a, at the same school, or if they're actually at a different school or department.
One thing that we've started discussions about, you know, the schools that have been in existence a long time, they have a lot of instruments. So, and a lot of them are old and outdated, you know, and unfortunately, you know, keeping track of them. So we need to have a system where we, we're more careful about what, you know, when they, you know, oh, well, this instrument is old, we no longer use it, so, you know, here. And then, we got to be able to track those. So that's, that's what we're doing, is looking at all those older ones. And there also, there's other equipment that you look at, like duplicators and other old outdated electronics equipment, which we need to inventory and get rid of.
And I think you'll recall that we recently changed this process, improved it. The district did go up to two years, allowing these items to be on inventory. Now, we respond very quickly to chasing these down to make sure that, because, you know, in two years, a lot can happen. Example, in like, in a lot of cases, we may have a change in leadership and a change in teaching staff, and then, you know, people can't, it makes it more difficult to track down an item.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Mrs. Jordan?
Thank you. And the only reason I ask, because it's over $6,000 worth of instruments, it's not just the two. And if they were obsolete, or they were destroyed, then that would have been shown on here. And I was just curious, because I know, for instance, my grandchildren are assigned those instruments, and we protect them with our lives, you know, because we don't want to have to pay for them. So that's why I was wondering if, you know, they were assigned to students...
Well, that's, that's the first thing we checked on to try and, and track them down. We could not find those logs, unfortunately. Those, those weren't, I will make you feel better, they were not new instruments. I do know that. They were very old, yeah. So we attempted, we went through, we even looked in the ceiling to see if they put them up there. We looked everywhere for them, because I was, I was rather embarrassed of the tuba. I got to be honest with you, I haven't lived it down yet. So I'm sure I'll hear about it in the future, too.
Thank you. Mrs. Vaughn?
Yeah, I was just wondering, what is the process for the things that are non-textbooks or non-chromebooks? For instance, I know kids that are in photojournalism, journalism, they're, they get cameras that they, are checked out to them. I don't know what other equipment might be, but how, is it all automated the way it is?
It is now, yes, ma'am. If it, if it's barcoded, it gets scanned, and then they know, and actually, if it's purchased, the district knows about it, and they come out and put a barcode on it.
So would the individual teacher then be responsible for, or would it be housed in a, God forbid, it's housed in the library with everything else, but in a central place where the kids that need a tuba go to a central place? Or is it the individual teacher that has to scan it in?
They would be checked out, and then they would be, then documented that they were checked out based on the barcode. So it would fall on the teacher to make sure that it was going to the right place, and to keep a log of what was checked out in the barcode. So that's why, that's what we're tightening up to double-check that.
Okay, because I was going to say, it, it seems like everything else, we have automated, the chromebooks came after I retired, and I'm assuming they're checked out in a similar way.
They're, yes, ma'am. They're, they're checked out through the media center, yes, ma'am. They're barcoded and checked out.
Wouldn't it make sense to have, you know, instead of putting it on the teacher, to write down a number and then...
That's a very good idea. I'm serious, I'm, I'm serious, now that I'm thinking about that. Maybe we could just look at where the database is and make sure that everything is on a central one, check out, because they do our barcode. The, the problem is, is the older equipment, the very old equipment, they might have had a Sharpie that was, that was written on them. So we would have to update that process as well.
Because back in the old days, you used to get a bunch of textbooks in our room, and it was up to the teacher to keep track and write down those numbers. But now, everything's automated.
It's all, it's all done through the media center.
So it stands to reason that anything of value that's checked out, instruments and cameras and what other equipment might be checked out, equipment of value, that instead of putting it on the teacher to jot down a number and then later get it scanned in or whatever, that there is some kind of central system where it's scanned and it automatically goes? Because then, you know, once a kid graduates, they have a camera, oh, well, you know, I mean, that's how we assess the fines for, for our seniors.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we planning to do that?
I can check on that. That's, that's a good idea. I mean, I don't have the answer to that one, but...
Does it sound like something that would work?
Yeah, we have the technology now, and I don't see any reason why we wouldn't be able to do that.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
The, the largest item, of course, is always the obsolete, and that's always the technology.
Yes, ma'am.
How are we, you know, looking outside the box at that? I noticed there's a lot that are smart boards, and we do have to update those from time to time. But with, you know, the trades department and all that, are we looking at some way to not spend as much on that, that I see you coming up, so?
I was going to let Clayton take this one, but...
He was looking hard for you to come up.
So the process we use right now is when we obsolete a piece of equipment, that equipment is evaluated to see if it's something that we would reuse in another role, for example, a limited kiosk type thing, if it's a computer or whatever. And the majority of the equipment that we would not reuse is sold to reclaim that revenue that comes back to the district. And with, if you look at, for example, the smart boards you brought up, smart boards have an exceptionally long useful life compared to other technology. So at the point where we're obsoleting a lot of these, the challenge is that a lot of other, you know, customers through the auctions don't really want them anymore, because you can't get the components to service them. So we do evaluate, we have a useful life on each type of equipment that is based upon your meantime between failures, which is a statistic we use to say that this device, really, after five years, is going to become super unreliable and so forth. But we do reclaim as much as we can through our auction process and through their companies that reclaim used assets, and they purchase that equipment from us.
And I don't know how much work it would be, or if you'd even think about it, but when you look at the, on the agenda where it has reason and item and original and netbook value, if there were a column that, that even shows historical amount reclaimed in this area, it does, it doesn't sting as bad. In other words, in the obsolete, yes, you do sell a lot of that, but there's, that's a large number that's showing there. If there were something that says, historically, we reclaim at least this percentage of that.
We can, we can provide you annual reports, if you like, the superintendent...
Don't need a whole report, just the top.
Okay. So we, it, putting a value, we can put an average value on a device, but of course, the condition makes a big difference in what we reclaim in that. But I can tell you that historically, we reclaim between $200,000 and $500,000 a year in sales.
And that, that's all I meant, not a whole list of things, but in each of those categories, you know, the reclaim amount for the previous year was this amount.
Okay.
That kind of makes sense to me. I don't know about anyone else.
I think they've given us, to us before. We get those after they do the resale and everything, they come back.
Right.
I can't remember what it was.
Well, that's why I was saying, from the previous year.
Right.
Because they wouldn't have that amount now to put on here.
Right. We, and we do, we do assign values to those assets based upon the average resale value, but, you know, that can vary quite a bit from year to year.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Vaughn?
Is that money still going to, there was some kind of a, a teacher supplement, or...
It, it goes back to the operating budget for compensation, yes.
Okay, so maybe I missed it, but have we gotten just that bottom-line figure, not a whole report, but how much?
From last year, I don't off the top of my head, but I can, I can email that to you.
Can we get that? And I mean, exactly how is it, it sounds like a financial question, but exactly how is that used when it goes into that fund?
I couldn't tell you how that transfers into other accounts. I'm sure our financial people could do that, but as far as what we do is, we, when we deposit it, we deposit it to the general fund, so...
Answer lady, I'm just, just curious. I mean, every cent counts when we're trying to pay our teachers, so I was just curious about that.
So your question was, what happens to the funds once we...
Yeah, what, is it, is it go into the pot of money? What, is there a particular pot of money that it goes into from selling those tech pieces?
Well, we track it in a separate project, so we know, you know, how much we made from those revenues versus, you know, how much was spent in order to reclaim the revenues. So yes, it is tracked separately to be able to do that reporting.
And does it get into the teacher's salary?
Well, it's all in the general fund. So in order to budget how much we will have for teacher salaries, that funding source is taken into account to say, okay, how much do we have to put in the pot for teacher salary increase?
Okay, but it goes into the general, not into...
It is in the general fund, yes.
Okay, that's, that is a little misleading to say it goes in to teacher's salary. Yeah, it does, because it's in general, but...
But we've committed...
Right, it's in the general fund.
To say that that, those dollars specifically, that's what we're trying to use this as a, as a way to, to really get additional interest in this particular program, because it does increase what we have available for compensation. So if we're able to raise a million dollars out of this through, you know, gov deals, et cetera, we're able to, to allocate that much more toward compensation as a direct result.
General operation, operating funds.
But we, we specifically committed to take that amount of money and make sure that was in teacher compensation.
Okay, that's, I was just wondering how, logistics of it, how it worked and where it went?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I understand that. Thank you.
Okay.
I did want to offer, just, just so you're aware, I did want to offer that we can provide guidance on assisting with barcoding other assets and tracking them for, so we'll engage with the academic services folks on that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Oden. Okay, board members, any other comments or questions regarding the regular meeting agenda? Seeing none, we're scheduled to take a 10-minute break. Is everyone wanting to take a 10-minute break? Or do you want to move on?
I'm happy to move on.
Move on? You can move on. Okay. We will not take the 10-minute break. We will now move on to the school board attorney position review. So, Dr. Atkins, did you want to say anything about it?
We have staff that will take you through this. We do have Dr. Pruitt, and I know Mr. Williams will be joining us shortly.
If, the, the information for gov deals, the revenue, was sent to us back in 11-1-2019. So they can see that in the update, how much it was.
Thank you, Debbie. Ms. Jordan?
Okay. Did everyone get that?
While we're waiting on Mr. Williams, who has the majority of, of the additional information, I'd like to sort of just talk us through the information that hopefully has been provided to you about the school board eternity candidates.
Is there anything in the paper version that's not online?
I hope not.
Yes, the binders you received are not, are not online.
The what was not?
Binders. That information is not, the binders are not online. I don't know if it was sent to you in an email. It was also sent to you in an email. Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Yeah.
Okay. So we advertised the position, and through that process, received eight applicants that met the minimum screening requirements. Those resumes were then reviewed against the rubric that you also received a copy of. The resumes were screened by the chiefs with the recommendation that you received. I'm sorry, Ms. Patratica, you did receive in an email as well, so. And so what I'm looking for at this time is, I would like to just get, if you have some initial feedback you'd like to provide, or questions that I can answer relative to this process. My recommendation would be for you all to also review the resumes against the rubric, and then provide to me your responses, which then I can collect and then share with the group. It is, in my opinion, for you to make a final decision relative to this position. You need to carry this through to see if you indeed have a viable candidate before you decide if that's the route that you want to go. And the only way you're going to know that is if you go all the way through this process and conduct interviews to determine if there is a single candidate that you would wish to entertain and discuss against the current option that you're utilizing.
Ms. Jivinelli?
So I, last time we spoke about this, there was some confusion as to what we were really doing. And, and I went back and we were told to watch the video, which I did. And we are, right now, just in the process of deciding if we are going to entertain these applications, which is what you just kind of mentioned, or keep our present attorneys.
Right. And in my opinion, the only way you can make that decision is to carry the process all the way through to see if there is a candidate. Because if there is not a candidate that you could all live with, then that sort of gives you your answer.
Right, thank you.
If there is a candidate, then I think you have that discussion versus the pros and the cons. But that you can't even make that decision with full clarity until you have seen your options.
And I, some, some members here were, that, of that understanding. They thought that people were applying, and they were, they were going to be automatically considered for a job, just because the fact that they were applying. And I, that wasn't the case at all. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody's understanding that.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
And I believe it was, it was, at least in my understanding, that we were not looking for a candidate that we could put up against what we currently have, but to see if there were viable candidates available. I think that's, that's where it started to fall off the rails, because I don't know if you all understood it, that you were going out to find one person, that we could say, how does this person stack up to who we currently have? Because that was not it. The idea was, in my mind, do we have viable candidates out there if we should so choose to go the same? if we should so choose to go the singular route?
I really believe that, you know, I went back and looked at the, the video as well. I, I don't believe we had a unified understanding when we left the room. Because what we didn't talk about necessarily are we going to go through an interview process. I know we left the room thinking, yes, we were going to do that. And then you would, from that, make a determination. Because that, that is typically what our process is. And also, it is our professional opinion that if you truly want to do an evaluation of what's available to you in terms of legal options, then that's what, what you would do. Once you would do that, then you have the option of determining, is this the route we want to go with a selection of an individual from, from this process? Or do we want to maintain the current model? Or do we want to entertain something other than that? So I do think that, that what I would like to come out of here with is clear direction in terms of so that we know whether or not we need to move forward and to set up the rest of this process, which would mean the screening for you all, setting up of, of a public interview process and also individual interviews as well, if that was what the board felt they wanted to do.
I have a question.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
So I'm going to ask, Madam Chair, I'm going to ask you just to poll the board and to see where people are with respect to the understanding that, that Dr. Pruitt has put forward. So instead of having this back and forth, back and forth conversation about what was intended, where does the board, at this point in time, see us moving forward? So at least we know what the issues are, if there are issues at the table.
So meaning, do we go through the process with the individual applicants? Okay, Ms. Morgan?
I would support going through the process with the applicants.
Meaning, can we just clarify, going through the interview process?
Following your recommendation.
Thank you, okay.
Ms. Vaughn?
I would also like to go through the interview process with the understanding that it may well be that we get through that and nobody is.
Right.
And then we can decide, do we want to advertise again or look at other options? But no, I want to.
Exactly. Thank you, Ms. Gittens.
I don't know, maybe I'm confused about, I think that the initial decision is whether we want to go with a firm or we want to go with individuals. And once we make that determination based on what's available, if we went for an individual, then we would make that determination. I, I don't know. I'm, I'm not for going through and interviewing and vetting people and all that. Then we decide, then we're comparing one person to the law firm that we have. And also, there were things that, information that was out there during that first meeting that we did not receive that would, might help us to understand some of the things financially as, as well. I, I just, I, I'm, I'm just leery of going through and interviewing and vetting someone. I would prefer if we take the possibilities that we have and we individually go through the rubric and see the, how viable it is, and then discuss whether we, you know, want to go one way or the other.
Okay, thank you. So then I understand that what Dr. Pruitt is saying, that if we go through that interview process, then we will have the opportunity to identify a candidate, if there even is one in that mix, which was the result of the advertising that took place. So, yes, Ms. Morgan?
Well, I would add that we know individually whether or not we feel that there is a viable candidate because we've all read the resumes. So if we didn't, none of us felt that there was a viable candidate in that list, we could stop today. I believe that there is the possibility of viable candidates in here, so I'm prepared to move forward.
Thank you. So then, Ms. Gittens, your vote is no?
No, I, I'm, no. I will vote no, because I think we need to look at our possibilities on both sides before we go and try to vet someone on one side. Then we're pitting an individual versus the current attorney. That's the thing that's confusing to me.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Jordan?
I would like to go through the process.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Patrica, process. Mrs. Giavanelle?
I would like to go through the process, but I want to add one thing to it a little bit. And then I don't, I don't want to throw a curveball a little bit, but I think at this point, since we're just determining if it's viable, that we need to, I would like to see, I don't know, something from our present board attorney to, in comparison to this. And I don't know if we put them in at the interview process to, for pros and cons. Because I feel like they're still part of the process at this point, for me. They're one of the candidates and, and I want to weigh out my pros and cons from the firm to an individual. And I think that it's only fair to give them that opportunity at the same time. And that's just my opinion.
So then I'm going to follow up and ask Dr. Pruitt the question. Isn't that part of the process then, at the, at the point when we have vetted the individuals?
Yes, great, yes.
Look at the information that's presented here?
Yes. I, I think that at that point, you look at, you know, comprehensively.
Thank you.
You know, what is offered? You've got to look at the level of service, you've got to look at fiscal impact. I think a variety of experiences that, you know, I think you look at all of those things.
And I think that's a process we need to go through. So, there you go.
Okay, great, thank you. And, and I also would like to go through the process. So that means that there's consensus that we will go through the interview process. And Ms., Mrs. Patrica?
I just wanted to say, at the end, after we go through the interview process and you come back to us and we vet all options, I would like from Attorney Beerman to follow up on the information that Attorney Quick indicated he would provide to us. We have moved so many of the board attorney roles over to staff attorney, and he indicated that he would give us an updated estimate of what you would charge us on a quarterly basis, given the fact that so many of those things have been taken off your plate. And I think that information is necessary as we go into the final decision-making process.
I'm happy to do that. I will tell you, though, that so far, under the flat rate, you are benefiting far more than we are as compared to the hourly rate. We're, we are getting well below what we were getting before. And while, you know, we're happy to continue under that, it, I, I don't see a real, without actually, you know, us saying no, we can't do this work when we're asked to do it, I don't see a way to, to really get a, a real reduction without cutting pretty deeply. And I will say, though, that I like to think of our role as being a value-added, rather than being a cost. And I think that now we can point to concrete examples where we have brought substantial monies to the district that the district otherwise probably would not have gotten. And I think that there, you know, we worked closely with staff to do that on the recovery of the mold remediation money. So far, we've gotten back 2.7 million, which was, which was initially denied through the appeal process. I'm not, I can't tell you that another attorney would not have been able to do that, but I can tell you that we were able to do that. And as you, Ms. Patrica, pointed out before, you've gotten a higher level of advocacy from our lawyers than you had in the past. And sometimes it actually translates into quantifiable benefits to the district. And I'm very proud of that. That is something that I strive for. And all of the attorneys in my firm, at my, at my insistence strive to always try to be a value-added, to always try to bring more than we cost. I, so anyway, and that, that said, as Ms. Bryan's office staffs up and we see through experience how that, whether that reduces our workload, and it may not, then we, we would be able to evaluate whether we could bring additional savings. But at, at 450 a year, without having the expenses of feeding and caring for an in-house attorney, I think we, we are providing value-added above what we're, above the, the cost.
Thank you, Mr. Beerman. Ms. Gittens?
On the materials that you gave us, the one that's the historical attorney expenses, under year-to-date 2020, the, I'm just wondering for clarity, under the Wyserota item, 236,726, if there could be a, an asterisk or something saying that that is for, if I'm correct, six months?
Yeah, hoping.
Or the period of time that that's for? Because looking at it at first, it looks like we're only into January and we spent, you know, $236,000 with Wyserota.
Doesn't that year run from, run concurrent with the school year, though?
I'm just wondering how long, I mean, our period of time that that is for.
Well, it, whatever it is, it should equal out at the end of a full year to 450,000.
Right. And it's saying that it's budgeted 527. When you look at that item.
I think that covers some of the outside counsel that, that is being employed through the school board attorney's office that was in place prior to when we became involved. I, I'm not sure, as I, I didn't work on it.
Because it's, it's not stating that on this document. It's showing, you may want to take a look at it and, and get back to us on it, but it doesn't state that.
Yeah, we, we did not, my office didn't prepare the, this, any of these.
So just take a look and let us know if this is correct.
So I'm, I'm understanding then that we're going to move forward in the process. So my next question is, is it doable for all of you to return completed rubrics to me by Friday? Is that a reasonable request?
Yes, yes.
Then the next step would be that I will get with Susan and we will schedule a time to do an open interview. And then, and the time will be based on how many people we decide to interview. And then, from there, it would be individual meetings with the candidates. Now, when we did this the last time, not all board members wanted individual time with all candidates. So I just need to know if everybody's interested in individual meetings with the candidates. If I could just see, just to see.
Not at this time, but I mean, I don't know.
It looks like everybody is. How do you do?
So I'll work with Susan and we'll. Well, I'll see how you, no, not all candidates.
Okay, thank you.
For example, the chiefs were, were kind of unanimous in thinking that four would be eligible for an interview or recommended for an interview. You all may feel that way, you may not. So once I get that feedback, I would, as we did before, is I would work directly with Board Chair. And we would finalize exactly what we're going to do. And then I would work with Susan to, to schedule that.
Okay, then.
Can I ask?
Yes, Ms. Gittens.
A question. On the screening rubric that you have, there's only one person that said possibly under certification of education law is.
That's by looking at their resume, it appears that they might be eligible to take the test. There are certain requirements that people have to meet in order to even sit for the test. So that's why it says possibly, because looking at the resume, they have the qualifications to take the test, but they would have to take the test and pass it. That's why it says possibly.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, and that really is similar to what I was going to ask, because we have most, it says not at this time.
That means they don't have the experiential requirements needed. They would have to have so many years in practicing education law, then they could sit for the exam.
Okay, and that's what I was going to ask. Okay, so there's an exam, but you're, you're not just going to walk in there, even if you're an attorney, and take it cold?
No, I, I certainly wouldn't think so.
So they would have to complete certain requirements? They can't just go to a, buy a book, education law for dummies and cram and pass it?
Right.
They would actually have to do those.
Yes, they'd have to meet those minimum.
Might that process take for those that?
Well, it depends, again, on how long and if they have any experience at all, if they could demonstrate that a percentage, you know, again, I'm just looking at a resume. So they may be able to produce evidence that they did indeed practice enough education law that they could get some experiential credits that would allow them to sit for the exam. So it's really kind of hard to say. You know, so that would be a debate or conversation as we got farther down the process.
Experiential credits plus take and pass.
Correct.
And pass it. The exam. Okay, will we, as we fill out a rubric, will we know on all of those that said not at this time and even possibly?
No, that's why that's filled in for you, so you don't need to do anything with that.
Okay.
That's really more just so when you're making your final recommendations, if you feel they should have an interview, you can kind of see the totality. You can see all the pieces. But we knew you wouldn't know that, looking at the resume, so that's why we filled it in.
Okay, and we're doing this one to 10, you said?
Really, we just prefer you can say yes or no, there's evidence in that particular category. And then kind of look to see, okay, it looks like this person has the majority of what we're looking for, so I would recommend them for an interview. I wouldn't say they have to have all yeses to be considered. That's, that would be a little unusual for someone to receive all yeses. And it's really from your lens, is this somebody based? Those indicators come directly from the job description. So it's, do you think that this person, you know, based on the information that you have? And again, it's limited and it's, there's going to be some subjectivity to it. There just is.
I just don't understand how to do it really well with, you know, somebody could put, yes, we have drafted and revised school board policy, and they did it once.
Right.
And other people have, and how would we know from looking at?
You won't.
A piece of paper?
You won't. That's why this is the initial round. And then that's from there, that's why you do the interview, so that you can. And it is potential, based on the feedback I receive from all of you. It may be that we look at the information and I may have to do some, some pre-phone interviews to get additional information. If, you know, depending on whatever feedback I receive from all of you, I'll kind of play that by ear based on, but, you know, honestly, a lot of that really has to come through the, the interview process there.
Ms. Patrica?
Can I have an electronic version of that rubric, please?
There, there should have been one in that email that was sent to you. But if you, would you like it separately by itself, or?
Because I remember that I read it, but I couldn't find it in the backup materials in board docs. But you're right, it's in an email.
Okay.
Thank you.
Board members, any further comments or questions for Dr. Pruitt? So then I guess we will submit the completed rubric to Dr. Pruitt by Friday, January 31st.
And what's the follow-up to?
Then Dr. Pruitt will review it and.
I'll work, I'll communicate through you.
To schedule interviews with any candidates that are outstanding.
We can probably give you some initial feedback. I have individual board member meetings February 3rd. And so Dr. Pruitt could probably be available at that time. So if you have any additional questions or feedback.
Or if you want me to find out something, or, yeah. Or you can email me individually, if you'd like, if, if there's something comes up.
Great, thank you.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. At this time, seeing no other business, workshop is concluded.
Do you want to do comments?
Okay, I'm sorry. Any comments for good of the order? Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, I see that we have a workshop coming up. Yeah, I see that we have a workshop coming up on the tax, the mileage of presentation that we're going to have. We were updated a week ago about RSM and that it's ongoing. I'm curious when we're going to reach a point where we can move as a board with RSM. Do we have a date, completion date?
You mean specifically with the?
Well, it's, we got the, not the chart, but the little thing that said, it's in process, the attorney.
That's for the hotline.
Right, but when are we going to get to that point? We can actually move on the things that are being worked on right now, the things that were discussed on that phone conversation and what the outcomes were there.
I just want to be clear, that the only thing in doubt right now, from the standpoint of the Department of Revenue, is, or from the, from the state, is whether RSM can serve as your auditor. The statute requires that you have a school board internal auditor. RSM has contracted with a number of school boards around the state, and in, I believe, Volusia County, they looked into, or they were going to contract with them and, and spoke with the Attorney General's Office, and the Attorney General's Office said, we're going to, we're telling you unofficially that, that contracting for your, for that particular service that's statutorily required for the internal auditor should not be an outside firm, but should be a full-time employee. But they never formalized that. So all we know is essentially hearsay from the attorneys at the Volusia County School Board that said that, that happened. We've not received, we've not heard of any formal opinion coming from the AG's office. That said, I was concerned enough that I said, at least with respect solely to the internal audit function, you should not proceed with RSM and you should probably proceed to hire an internal auditor. And I don't, you know, I don't know if that has gone forward, if you've made progress on that, but that, that was the, that is the position that we've taken because of the uncertainty regarding whether RSM can serve as the internal auditor. They, on, of the, all the other products that they offer, all of the other work that they have offered to do, you can proceed with, including the hotline. And I believe you directed that the hotline moved forward. I don't know where, that, where the hotline stands right now, but I, you know, at least the legal advice is that you could move forward with that.
Okay, so then, what I'm saying is, tick tock, we need to get on this, and where exactly are we from a week ago? When, when the conversations, when the phone conversation that was on the hotline?
On the hotline.
Right.
According to, may I speak?
Yes, Ms. Gittens.
The update that we received with the dashboard?
Yeah.
Is that the hotline, which we approved several months ago, is at the staff review and procuring a vendor. And Dr. Atkins, can we talk about, about that? I'm, I'm not sure what staff review means, procuring the vendor is, do I understand that, where are we on that process? And is that?
Well, first, I'm, I'm not a part of the phone call or that process. As I understand it, Mr. Williams' staff and also Mr. Quick, I believe, was also there. You had a board attorney. So it's representatives from RSM, working with representatives from the district, as well as, as your representative were in the room. And my understanding is they continue to work on drafts for those three policies that had originally been put forward by RSM.
And I'm just, I'm a little concerned about the time. I mean, we've had their initial policies for a while, and I just really think we need to at least move forward, and I know we have to procure a vendor, and that's going to take time, but if we don't move forward on this, we'll be the end of the, the school year and not be able to have this in place. It'll be a whole year.
Candidly, I do believe that staff has been working on this quite a bit. The difficulty is that we were presented not that long ago with total, total policies that had been created in a vacuum without any input, and a part of our, our staff, in addition to that, there were some significant legal concerns with those policies that I believe that the company wasn't aware of. So I know that Mr. Williams has been working with them to address those, or things that we couldn't implement anyway if we had wanted to.
Well, and then we're talking about, once you get that decided, bringing it for board And then are we talking about going through the whole, the policy changer? This is just something we decide to do. Because if we're talking about, we received an email the other day about the timeline for policies and policy changes, and if we have another month or so to get through the staff and the procurement and then the board review, that's going to take a while. So can you give us some update on what we're looking at?
Absolutely, and through the chair. And I'll also allow Mr. Beerman to comment, because Mr. Quick, and I believe Mr. Saunders was also on the line during our call. We actually provided substantial feedback to RSM, to which the representative from RSM actually made several revisions to the policy. There were concerns about certain things that may or may have fallen into quote-unquote unauthorized practice of law, so it was suggested that they speak with the Florida Bar in terms of formulating the certain provisions within the policies that they provided. We actually just ran out of time. We, we had a, originally an hour scheduled, we made it through the hour, only getting through one of the policies. And one of the concerns that was also raised in trying, in terms of trying to identify, you know, potential issues moving forward, was that some of the policies as it relates to discipline may involve going to the unions, and as some of that is laid out in collective bargaining. I know discipline is an issue that came up last year in collective bargaining, and I think if we're going to implement that, that was discussed as a, another, I guess, step in the process of approving these, that we may want to reach out to our unions and, and facilitate that conversation, and that would be handled through HR.
Can, can I ask, though, if, if we're looking at a hotline, maybe I'm looking at it too simplistically, we're looking at a hotline where employees are able to call in to a third party?
Others.
Or, or others concerning things that they feel are issues, not, and then what happens to that afterwards, as RSM explained, goes to the third party, to them and to us. So, am I wrong in saying, we're not talking about changing how we handle employee or situations or complaints, that this is just a filter to gather that information? And they, and I don't believe that RSM is trying to tell us how to run the district.
Well, you know, and again, there are multiple policies we're talking about here. We're talking about the whistleblower, we have the ethics, so it's, there's, there's three sets of policies there. And I don't, I didn't feel, and again, you're more than welcome to reach out to RSM, that they were very receptive. They were actually coming back with feedback in resp, with, in response to our feedback. So I don't, it was a very collaborative meeting, it wasn't a, we're trying to change anything. It was about clarifying the policy so that the board has the best policy available that's legally compliant. We didn't want to have any issues as it relates to the process moving forward. And again, as it relates to discipline, that's, that's involved in that ethics provision, and it specifically references the disciplinary process. When you go to the hotline, it involves a process where it discusses how the investigation will take place, and then you have, the concern there was a lack of due process in that, in allowing the respondent, so to speak, who is accused of violating that particular policy to have an ability to respond. That's not even, it was, there were concerns about that information.
But, the thing is, and this is the last thing I'll say, the information that RSM put together was a collaboration of policies and procedures from other districts that are and have been doing this. It's not something that they, you know, pulled together and decided, we'll do this for Lee County. So, I don't understand why the legality aspect, if there are several large districts that are already using this policy.
Because the distinction there would be that the, typically the function that utilizes this policy is a inspector general's office, not a internal auditor. And as such, there are, most inspector general's offices contain attorneys that have different background in our bar to provide legal assessments of certain things. It's the structure that if you, you, and RSM admitted this, it's not, I'm not making this up, so, I mean, I just, I think the, when you look at some of these policies and who actually is implementing them, they're typically run through inspector general offices and not, not through an internal auditor.
So how are they getting it done with other districts that are currently?
I posed the same question, I don't think I got a very clear response. So I, I think that, you know, it, and again, I'll let our school board attorney chime in, because they were also on the phone. I, you know, I just, it, it, it was a, a very collabor, I mean, they made, you know, RSM's representative made his own revisions to the, the policy, and I think we left it at that, we just didn't get through all of the policy.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Ms. Vaughn?
I would actually like to be briefed, even if it takes a closed-door meeting by our own board attorneys on this, who are on, on the line, rather than the staff attorney, because RSM or whoever and the hotline will be board responsibility. So, Mr. Beerman, you weren't on the line.
I wasn't on the call, but I'll make sure that John Quick calls you and speaks to you, unfortunately, on something like this, because it involves a, you know, contract and not pending litigation, we won't be able to have a closed-door session with the entire board president.
Okay, well, I, I just think that would work, but.
But we can cer, we're happy to brief you individually on the, on the, about the discussion on the call, but my understanding is that it is to, it is to be continued, because as, as Mr. Williams said, that, that time ran out.
Well, and, and the issue is, at least to me, to be continued, to be continued, to be continued. We started on this before last July, I don't remember what month, maybe May, April or May, that we started looking at what the state had, had mandated for us, the internal auditor, and here it is almost February, and we don't have anything in place, and we're just now getting it figured out that, oh, well, maybe we can't even have RSM, and look how long it's taking us to get a board attorney. It'll be another, heaven knows how many months, and, and to me, that's just unacceptable. If staff needs to look at it, from my point of view, they need to step up the pace, because it's taking way too long.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Mrs. Giavennelli?
So, Mr. Williams, is it my understanding that you think we, from what you're understanding is we should have had an, an inspector general, and then maybe the RSM would be employed underneath that? How would, is that kind of what you're saying?
No, that wasn't, that wasn't necessarily my recommendation, I was just trying to structure based on how they had it laid out, because they are, that was one of the thing, questions that I asked, was who was staffing this particular model for the whistleblower hotline and what their, their background was, so that, because again, they're, the Florida Bar is very tricky when you start delving into anything that may have a legal function to it, so, you know, and to protect the board's interests as well as RSM's interests, I advise them to speak to their own internal legal counsel or reach out to the, the Florida Bar directly, as these functions are typically done. When I, I went out myself and researched some of these policies, just to see, get, get a handle on, you know, where they were getting information from. And again, most of the functions are run through an inspector general's office. I think one that is a little bit of a hybrid is West Palm Beach, that serves as both the inspector general and the internal auditor.
Right, which is what, what I had recommended us look at, but nobody else wanted to entertain that, because that was one of the, the recommendations that I sent to Dr. Pruitt. So, okay, so it sounds like we're back to square one.
Well, in defense of staff, I mean, I understand this is a board decision. And, and the other thing is that we have to work with the board attorney and an outside collaborator, so I, I think that that has to be taken into consideration. This is also a new law, and you can see right now that it's, there's some ambiguity as it relates to that law, and I think that further complicates this.
Ms. Patrica?
And that was my comment, I'm not clear on why we're hammering staff when there are, when we have a hired board attorney and a hired RSM that also has to coordinate. And, and from my perspective, doing it quickly is not the most important thing, doing it correctly is the most important thing. And if it takes time to get it done correctly, I'm comfortable with taking that time.
Ms. Giavennelli?
Well, I thought there was a timeframe that we had to have something in place, and I think that's the reason there was an issue with that, I think, regarding the, the law.
There is, but the board has not made a decision or provided any direction to staff whatsoever to hire an internal auditor. We, as a board, have not done that.
Talking about two different things at the same time.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, to clarify that.
Beerman?
Yes, I'm sorry, there, I just want to clarify once more, that there is no state law that requires you to have a whistleblower hotline. The state law requires you to have an, to have an internal auditor, and the ambiguity right now is whether that internal auditor must be a full-time employee of the school board or could be outsourced to a company like RSM. With respect to the hotline, legally, you can certainly hire RSM to run a hotline. As Brian pointed out, they need to ensure among themselves that they're not violating any state law with respect to the unlicensed practice of law, but as long as they do that, you, you could certainly have an outside firm run a whistleblower hotline.
So, I have a question, is, is it, is there a definition of full-time employee, and is it expressed that, that the auditor should be?
No, it's, that's the problem, unfortunately. The problem is that the statute says nothing about whether it's an employee or an outside contractor, and we just heard from another school board?
Right.
That the AG's office told them that they were going to, at some point, make an opinion that it had to be an employee and not an outside firm, and that's why we stopped with respect to using RSM to fulfill that audit function.
Right.
My recommendation is that because we don't have clarity, the safest option would be to hire an employee to be a person who only provides the audit function to you, not a firm that provides it to others. Doesn't necessarily have to be a full-time employee if you don't think that there's enough work there for a full-time employee, but my sense is that there, there is, but that the person has to be directly employed by the school board in order to avoid the possibility that if the attorney general's opinion follows through with what they told the other school board, that we won't have a problem, because you, you will have met the statutory requirement. I, I would say, look, at this point, in the absence of any clear direction, you probably could go with RSM, at least temporarily, and then if they clarify and they say, no, the auditor has to be an employee, you would, you would, you know, you would stop with RSM and you'd hire someone. But if you want the safest option, the safest option is to, to hire somebody. But again, nothing to do with the whistleblower hotline.
Right.
Totally separate. And, and many of the things that RSM proposed, you could do. The only thing that, that we're concerned about is just the internal audit function.
Exactly. Ms. Patrica and then Ms. Giavennelli.
Can we request an opinion from the AG?
Yes.
And how long will that take?
Could take forever. The, the gun opinion took?
A year.
Yeah, more than a year.
Right.
And, and, you know, we can, we can try to do, try to get an informal opinion, we, you know, with a phone call, but that won't be, that won't have the same effect as a, as a formal opinion.
Well, I think that if we revisit the hiring of an internal auditor, we set ourselves back even further, because I think the determination, I think most of us agreed that one person can't, doesn't have the expertise to do what's needed in this district. So I think that, I think the way for a district of our size to be in compliance with the law is to go with what we had decided in the first place, engage RSM or some other organization to, to do that. But, but compliance with the law at this point, I think, is?
Sure.
The most important thing.
And you could, you could pursue your contract with RSM, and they would be able to. to serve as outside auditors. And if you are required to hire an internal auditor employee, they could continue to provide services through that person.
Right.
And that's, that's an option that you have.
And also, Dr. Atkins, we're looking at hiring another internal auditor, right?
Yes.
Yes. And the individual that we had in place before was uncomfortable with the notion of scope of work beyond what he had been previously doing. As we look at hiring a new position, is it possible, and I'm just asking this question, I'm just thinking about it as I'm asking it, I'm thinking out loud, is it possible that we could be looking for candidates who would have the capacity to handle both the internal fund and this function, doling work out to RSM or some other firm?
Well, we could certainly, we could certainly look at that. I know that part of the individual, his lack of comfort had to do with a lack of expertise in certain areas. So you'd want to broaden your net, so to speak, as it relates to what you're looking for in an internal auditor. But we could certainly, as we're doing that, look at what other districts are doing within this respect and whether the qualifications of those individuals, and what are they paying those individuals versus what we currently have as our model.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Ms. Giavennelli.
Sorry to jump all over, but I actually wouldn't be really comfortable with an employee that would act in both positions, I would think, because the auditor is supposed to be employed for the board. And that should be a separate position. But I'll, I just want to jump back over to the whistleblower and to Mr. Williams. Basically, RSM has, was, has given several vendors for us to use, and I thought that's where we were at with that. And I don't see why we can't move forward with picking a vendor and starting the whistleblower hotline. So I think that's, that, I don't know, I wasn't privy to the whole conversation, so I trust what you're saying and what he's saying. So I think we just need to get back to the vendor. Because I don't believe RSM was the vendor for the, to be the whistleblower hotline. I thought that they had recommendations for some. So that was my understanding. So I don't, I don't see why we can't kind of move in that direction in hiring the vendor.
And again, as it relates to the vendor, I'm actually, now that you're saying that, a little confused about that process because I think when that did, that topic did come up during our conversation. And it was my understanding that RSM would be receiving the calls and that a vendor would be gathering the information or something to that effect.
The other way around.
Right. Exactly.
It was explained in the meeting, it was the other way around, the calls going.
There would be an outside vendor that would facilitate through RSM. That was my understanding as well.
Correct. And I haven't received any information about outside vendors. I don't know if that went to the board attorney or other staff. That wasn't part of
Procurement.
Our call.
Okay, so.
And again, I was not on the call, John Quick was, but I had thought from the RSM presentation that they would work to find a, the vendor is essentially a call center that does intake.
Right.
Correct.
But RSM is administering the program.
They said they were.
So it may be something that can be procured under RSM.
Don't we need the policies in place before we start to get calls?
Yes.
See, I don't. That's the issue. Like, we're, the cart before the horse hiring.
Right. Let's, Ms. Jordan?
I just wanted to say, I know, like, when we started this, I did reach out to several different districts to see how they did their auditing and how many people it took. It needed a whole department in order to make that happen. It wasn't just one individual person. So we did have all that information. And then RSM came in, which they had all the other people.
Expertise.
But as far as the, and they're the ones who recommended the whistleblowers, that we did not have that policy and we needed to, we should, they recommended that we should have one. And I may be forgetting some things, but I'm pretty sure of that. And then they said that they had worked with these call centers because of the fact that, I know their question came out regarding employees calling, and they would have no way of knowing if they were employees or just outside people contacting them. Because it is for, it was supposed to be for employees, a hotline for employees.
Not only.
No.
No.
Anyone.
Right. Because I understood it as being a hotline for the employees. Because that was my question to them was, how do they decide or how do they know that that's an employee? And he's, they stated that their, the call centers are very good. They ask these certain questions. They're very good at taking the intake, and then they disseminate that information. So I know we don't, whatever, we need to move forward with something.
So at this point, it sounds like we're at a standstill.
What I would recommend and with the school board attorney's assistance is that we just reach out to RSM and see where they're at with respect to the follow-up to the recommendations and suggestions, as well as the discussion that we had most recently. And I think it was going to result in a modified version of that document. And I guess through the school board attorney, he can provide an update directly to the board on that issue.
Thank you.
And then you have two more policies that you need to work through.
Correct.
Also, we need to determine the implications to the collective bargaining agreement because the collective bargaining agreement is going to trump whatever you have in your policy. That's an agreement that is in place. So if you're, if you're contemplating any change to disciplinary procedure that would impact that prior to implementation, you would have to have that collectively bargained and agreed to by the employee unions that it would impact.
So.
Yes, Ms. Atkins.
So, Mr. Williams, I, what I'm trying to understand is, okay, the employee hotline is just to say, I'm feeling some kind of way about the way I'm being treated at my job. That comes into the hotline. It goes to RSM, and they give it to us. And then we, as a district and the staff, handles it from there. So I guess where I'm confused is why then are we looking to change what we're doing at that point? Right now, we just don't have that filter. But from time to time, we do have people saying, or administrators saying, this is going on and it needs to be investigated. And we are adding a screening piece that people can go through to get that information to us. So are you saying then, though, with this process, that we also have to change our policies?
Yes.
Well, this is a policy, and so I'm not, I'm not saying, suggesting that the process that you want is not proper. I'm just, I think we were asked to provide feedback on issues we saw arising out of the language in its current form. We provided that feedback, to which RSM responded, making modifications. They acknowledged those, those issues as well, and they were going to go back and look into some other areas. So as far as the process, again, my only point of raising how other districts have typically, and I won't say other districts, other agencies have typically handled these. It's a process that is, again, typically handled by the inspector general. It is a policy in our, it's being brought as a policy. And so it would need to be approved. And I think any component that would potentially fall into the collective bargaining should just be addressed with the unions prior to us. I don't, I don't want the union to feel that we're trying to circumvent their contracts by bringing a policy without getting input as it relates to that particular process.
Ms. Vaughn.
But I defer to the school board attorney. So, I mean, you know, I provided feedback. We, we got, and it wasn't just myself, there were other staff members involved, as well as the school board attorney provided some feedback in that conversation. So this is not, I think, you can reach out to RSM. We've been very, you know, we've, we've been, the lines of communication have been flowing in terms of trying to get this resolved. I don't want there to be this appearance that somehow we're trying to, you know, put this off in any way. And again, our comments were substantial and given, provided to RSM prior to our call so that that call could actually be as fruitful as possible, and they could have an opportunity to gauge their responses to those comments.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Ms. Vaughn.
Okay, a couple things. Just to kind of answer what Ms. Jordan was saying, I believe that one of the benefits of this hotline, which would be open to anyone, the benefit for employees would be the anonymity. That is huge because there is, whether true or not, there is a feeling among many of the employees that retribution occurs if they rock the boat, so to speak. I'm not saying it's true. I'm not saying it's false. True or false, it keeps people from putting forth important information. And I go back to one of the things that really swayed me, the man from Boston, I forget his name, but, and then, oh, Claire was the one that brought forth the idea, the employee that had been with a district or company forever. And she kept looking the other way because it was somebody that, you know, she knew and worked with. And then she put forth something in the whistleblower that I think, you know, some of these things have disappeared. And lo and behold, when there was an investigation, it was ongoing for many, many years. And so it's those kinds of things. And it may not result in huge results financially, but there is definitely that possibility. So that's about the employees. Now, going back, I'm not trying to hammer staff. What I'm trying to do is to bring us as a board back to what we talked about. And I remember very specifically that as a board, I don't remember what the vote was, but I remember specifically that we all, that enough of us thought that hotline was a good thing. And so I would say that if we can go ahead and get those things in place, and finally, regarding the timeline, I really do think that we are dragging our heels on this. And because even if we started this second, policy changes and this and that and hiring and all of that, that's still adding months. And if we wait any longer to start this, we're going to be back over a year from where we started. So we can direct, it's the superintendent who directs his staff. And I would like to suggest that when, maybe at our action meeting, that we come up with a time certain, that we come up with a date that, okay, we need this sped up, we need to move on this, or we will have wasted all this interim time.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Board members, any other comments? Mr. Bierman, anything else?
Nothing further from me.
Mr. Williams?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else for good or the order? Seeing none, then we will have an adjournment.
Thank you very much.
And we'll see you tomorrow at 2:00 o'clock for the briefing.